Here.
Ronan.
Present.
Wunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Wunsness.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shoneman.
Present, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one person scheduled to speak for our open forum. Greg, go ahead and make your way up to the podium and make sure the little green light is on. Take about a couple of minutes to say your piece.
I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I was going to listen more to the speak and then hopefully have an input after that. Not quite sure what, I read in the paper about 60-day extension. My question is, is what all involves this extension? You know, what provisions?
Sure, we'll be discussing that length here pretty momentarily, I guess. We've got, it's really the first order business, the order in which we take on the open forums usually beforehand though, so.
I don't think any of them are 60-day extension or without, yeah, maximum without a weekly revisiting, revote on the ordinance.
Okay. And the reason I wanted to come was to learn what to expect is going to happen for us. I do know there's been some activities, goings-ons, you know, here in the last past week that the distancing and all that stuff has not been adhered to. And I don't know why some things are and some things aren't, you know.
So, just a quick question.
I want to know who's on.
What's that in reference to?
Well, the other day, was it last week, Saturday or whatever, when they had the protests or whatever, this was over at Central Park or whatever, there was 200 and some people there, there was no distancing there, there was many people weren't wearing masks and so on. How do we explain that to the public when there's other things, you know, businesses that were extending those provisions for, you know? And then the other thing that kind of caught my ear, I wasn't there, but Brown County Speedway. I mean, that was nuts a lot there, you know, place was packed, sitting on top of each other, hundreds and some cars, you know, and there again, there's no provisions there to adhere to the, so it looks to me like there's activities and so on that people are just want to get out and do what they want to do, not what they're being told to do.
So the Brown, the Brown County Speedway would be under control of the Brown County Commission?
Yeah, but is that in city limits? No? Okay. But it's just, you know, and it's a store. It was really interesting, we opened up May 5th, and that day I was there all day long, one person wore a mask in. Okay, the next day, one person wore a mask in, I asked him, "Why are you wearing a mask?" He says, "'Cause I just got out of the hospital." And granted, the mask has, there's been more and more wearing masks and stuff, but people are eager to just do what they want to do, you know? And you can't blame them, I mean, it's been, and the other thing that kind of caught my eye, whatever, is a week ago, June 3rd, there were 62 active cases. Today, there was 37, so that's a reduction of 24 active cases. Granted, you know, some of the other counts go up, but yet the counts are going down, so we're on the right track. And don't get me wrong, you guys have done a great job. If you wouldn't have done what you did, we would have been in trouble with the hospitals and stuff. But what's happening with the business people, bars, restaurants and so on, we're getting hurt, and it really hasn't come back all that great because of the way we have to have our seating and so on like that.
Tell us how has it impacted your business since you reopened in May?
Well, we're probably down 40 to 50% yet. If I didn't have to ask my bank to just let me pay interest only, I wouldn't be making it. I don't know, and I don't know how the other businesses are going, but.
So what was the impact in March, or February, March to you before the restrictions really came on?
Well, it had slowed down before, we closed March 26th, and I did so because that noon hour, the 25th, was just, there was nothing. My labor costs were 150-some percent, so I said, "No more." And I did it because I didn't understand, and I don't know if a lot of people understood what was going to happen with this virus, you know, how it was going to affect people. You know, I'm 65, I'm overweight, and I'm diabetic, and I was scared. I didn't want, I didn't want to do it for my customers, I didn't want to do it for my staff and for myself. And so I just shut down totally. Well, to be honest with you, it was probably the biggest mistake I ever made. I should have at least kept going with the deliveries and to-gos, but I didn't do that. I chose not to do that because I didn't want to be there, I didn't expect my staff to be there too. So anyway, I shut down totally for five weeks. I knew the 3P loan was coming through from the SBA. Little did I know that that was going to start the day my application was accepted, which was April 19th. So I paid seven people on my staff from March 26th to the 19th of April out of my pocket, well, actually, bank's pocket. But, you know, and that's what happened, so now my loan goes, at that time it was eight weeks, which would have been June 19th. And I was just trying to get to June 12th, you know, that's when this ordinance was going to expire. I was just working hard to get to that point so I could open things back up and get some normalcy and, you know, and it's worked so far. But if, when I have to start paying my notes back, that's, it's not going to work, so.
So you know you got 24 weeks now?
I do.
Okay.
Just a quick question, you look familiar, but what business do you own?
Pizza Ranch.
Pizza Ranch?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I actually was in Mowbridge and their, listened to their council meeting because it was Tuesday, and their Pizza Ranch owner came and talked to that city council at that time too, so.
Well, I think what happens with like the Pizza Ranch, you know, corporate has gone above and beyond trying to make things safe for us. And right now, we are doing what we call cruise-serve buffet, it's like cafeteria style, you come in, you get a plate, and then we put it on your plate. It's so labor-intensive, it's just mind-boggling. And I've had customers come in that have, we told them what we're going to do, and they turn around and walk out. They don't want to be served, they want to do it themselves. And so that's kind of.
Is that something that you have a choice in, Greg, or is it corporate?
We do, we do. And I was, I chose to do the cafeteria style until after this ordinance expired, is what I wanted to do, get to that point. Then it kind of opens up and I can go back to, with some safety precautions also.
So how is, have you had to remove seats in order to comply?
I did, yep.
About how much seating capacity have you had to remove?
We probably went down, we were 166 seats before, and I think we're down to like 129. But what I did was I put, all the tables are six-and-eight top tables, you know, I've got two or three four-top, but there'll be people that'll come in and sit down, and then nobody else will sit at that table, you know? And they'll be taking up eight chairs, so.
Sure.
So, a quick question for you, what type of regulations does Pizza Ranch have should there not be an ordinance in place? I know the owner in Mowbridge said they have a long list of stuff that they have to do.
Yeah, they have, you know, need to wear gloves, masks, so on like that. But it changes from, you know, and Pizza Ranch incorporates a lot of different states, so different states are opening up, and so it works in one state, doesn't work within another state, so they, and they just send it all out generic, you know? It's kind of, you know, I do whatever I need to do to keep my customers safe, my staffs safe, because the last thing I want to do is have someone get sick at the store, and then everybody's quarantined, you know? And so that's kind of, you know, we're doing everything at our restaurant that needs to be done to stay safe, so.
So if the ordinance was sunsetted and just disappeared, you would expect there to be an increase in your pizza business?
I do believe there will be in time. What I've noticed a lot this last week, last week, is families are coming out, groups, you know, of course, we don't let them sit more than 10 at a table, but with younger children. So that's kind of a sign that people are loosening up, you know, wanting to make up their own mind, I guess, so.
Great, does anyone else have any questions for Greg while he's up at the podium?
First off, I commend you for paying your employees during that situation. So, I mean, some business owners wouldn't do it, many business owners did, and I commend all those that.
Well, thank you.
That did that, because at least then those people had some security.
Well, you know, on that PPP loan, you could, let some, furlough some of them, and then they could be getting unemployment, and some were making a lot more money on unemployment than what, and anyway, but if you called them back and they refused to, then you could turn them in and then they'd lose their benefits. And I had one gal that didn't want to come back, and I told her, I said, "I'll just call unemployment, and you won't get that." And she came back, you know, but, and the ones that I kept, it might have been a really good thing to do what I did, because the ones that stayed and I paid them, they didn't know what it was like to sit at home and get just 600 bucks for doing nothing, you know? And granted, they still got paid for not doing anything, but I didn't have to get them back, you know?
But I just wanted to commend you because, you know, a lot of good business owners did the right thing, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Move along to our old business section. We've got discussion of possible second reading and final adoption of emergency ordinance number four regarding the novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health crisis. Ron, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second reading of ordinance number four is on for the council's consideration. If it is adopted, then there would be publication of that on the Saturday edition of the paper, so it'll be effective as of June 13th. And I have no further comments on the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Move approval.
Second.
I think we've got a motion from Wunsness and a second from Ronan. I have a question for you, Rob is the primary author of this thing. So I know that one of the primary focuses of our last discussion was seating capacity and the capacity in bars and restaurants. Now, I had an understanding of the previous ordinance and resolution that we could calculate based on a broad number of square footage per person compared to the space that a person could access within that business. A nice mathematical thing, we've worked out little sheets to which they could post at their entrances if they chose, but you were saying that this one wouldn't have such a restriction.
I think this is simpler, I agree with that. I think this is simpler, it requires that folks that are not part of the same group, part of the same family, that there would be sufficient space to allow physical separation of at least six feet. And so I think that is simpler, it's much what Mr. Jensen has done at his business, it's what other businesses would continue to do.
So if I owned a lager's, for instance, and now I know that it's 180 people is what's posted on there, normally it's about 600 is what the building code allows for, how do I know how many people can come? I know a lot more people, he's hoping that a lot more people than 180 will come, what is the magic number? How does he know when there's too many people?
He gets out a yardstick and he figures out how to keep six feet between tables, how to keep six feet between bar stools that are occupied by unrelated parties. So it's going to be up to each business.
And in terms of enforcement, how do you see that going?
I see it going much like enforcement has been over the last several weeks where we, where maybe the law enforcement has gone in and said, "Does it appear that you are complying? You need to comply." And I think that is really what we're going to be left with, we're going to be left to the good faith of our citizenry, and I think that's probably the best we can do.
Right. Any other questions or comments to be made on this thing?
Yes, real quick, if this were to not pass, though, we still will need, or the businesses still would need to follow the CDC guidelines, which I'm not up to date on today's version, but would be more strict, is that correct, than what we currently are proposing?
Well, I think, if that's directed to me, Dave, first of all, the CDC guidelines and the White House guidelines, I agree that they are more strict than what this proposal is. This proposal does not require physical separation, even if you're not a member of the same family, if you're the member of the same party who goes to a restaurant, for instance. So I think this is less strict. But keep in mind, those guidelines are not mandatory, those are voluntary, and people are free to follow them or not. This ordinance, even though it is not particularly onerous, at least is an ordinance that does have the force of law.
Well, one of the points that Greg made, I thought was good, was a number of active cases in the county last week when we voted on, the first reading of this was 62, it's actually 35 today, according to the South Dakota Department of Health, so it's nearly been cut in half in just this last week's time, so we're certainly moving in the right direction, and I think that it's time, personally for me, to support getting rid of this thing altogether. The WHO, World Health Organization, came out with a statement saying that asymptomatic spread of this disease is very unlikely, and that is exactly the reason why the social distancing was such an important component to this.
Actually, they walked back that statement, and Dr. Fauci came and said yes, with CDC said yes, people who are asymptomatic can spread the disease, so.
Is it asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic?
Asymptomatic is the word.
And then the CDC came out and said that it doesn't appear to be transmittable on solid surfaces, which was another major component of why this thing was so frightening in the very beginning. I think that we've done a good job as a community, I think that we've held our own, and we've kept this thing at bay as best that we really can, and I think that at this stage in the game, we're belaboring something that I don't think is any longer necessary.
And I agree with some of your comments, Mayor, I think we have, I think we have done, I think this community has done a terrific job. I think Mr. Jensen's comment is also right, that a lot of the reasons we've had the success we have in flattening the curve is the action that this council has made, that the compliance that we've had among our citizenry, I think has been exemplary. I think for us, though, now to say it's over, there is no COVID-19 anymore, go do whatever you'd like, I think that is irresponsible. And at least we ought to encourage our citizens to apply the minimum standards to keep flattening that curve. And at some point in time, we hope that there will be a vaccine and that we don't need this type of an ordinance.
Anyone else have anything to add before we take a vote on this?
Hi, Travis, can you hear me?
Yes, Josh, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say, with other cities in the state not having this additional ordinance, so if we look at, let's just use a wedding, for example, and you have the joints of Aberdeen, or Warrentown, or Tupul, or Brookings, or other places in the state that don't have this ordinance, people are trying to figure out a seating arrangement for a wedding, and maybe it's an unknown who come, and you have to seat them by themselves because they might not be with any other family members. You can say they're all in the same dining party, but we limit it to 10. I think just the enforcement of this, I think is impossible. So, I'm going to vote no against on this, because I think if we follow the guidelines that set forth at covid.sd.gov, to me, I think that's, beyond that, I think if we pass an ordinance that other cities in the state don't have, I believe it hurts the city of Aberdeen. And I've heard that from business owners, I've heard that from people who run events, and not only does it hurt them, but it hurts all the businesses that those people would otherwise shop at. So I'm going to vote no.
So, one thing with this, and this is into Councilmember Rife's comments, CDC guidelines are actually more strict, they limit how many people can be in certain spaces, or limit large groups to, if you have substantial spread in your community, to no more than 250 people, depending on the area. This one basically says, if you have a whole convention center and you can space your table six feet away.
You're good.
You're good. When you go to a wedding or anything like that, guess what? They're more than six, they're probably close to six feet away anyway, because you have to have walk paths for people to get through. So I don't think by passing this ordinance, it would limit us from other types of things. What's going to limit us is, again, like the person who spoke to us before, the guidelines that come down from companies. It may be that, you know, let's say a Best Western says you can't do this. It may be that, you know, McDonald's Corp. says you can't open your lobby. So there are many things on that we just have no control over, but by limit, by sitting there saying, "No, you can have this," we're actually better than CDC guidelines as far as groups. Also, without an ordinance saying you must follow CDC guidelines, there is no teeth saying that people need to follow those guidelines. And I think those guidelines are there for a reason, I think the experts did a good job putting them together for numerous entities, businesses, social gatherings, you name it, to try and afford people a minimal amount of protection. And I think, you know, that's probably the biggest thing with that is, is this is actually better than CDC guidelines in the fact we're saying we don't care how many people are in a room, as long as groups can stay.
So Clint, if it says that they must adhere to CDC guidelines, we couldn't be less limited than CDC guidelines, is that not the case?
Except we're making the exclusion in the ordinance for capacity.
Family members.
And we're not limiting it to 10 anymore. Basically, we're saying if you're in the same social group and you go out to eat with 20 people and they can accommodate 20 people, 20 people can go out to eat together as long as they're social.
I don't understand how, it says discontinued business practices incompatible with CDC hygiene practices, so you're specifically calling that out, leaving the rest of it off of the table.
Hygiene practices are washing your hands, Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that.
Amen, Mayor.
Councilman Olson.
Yes, I think there was a vote just recently that had an impact on me, and that was the Brown County Fair Board. That was, is a 23-member board, very diverse group of people, and they voted unanimously not to have the fair. I think that sends a very strong message that these folks are concerned about the health and welfare of the people of all of Brown County. And so that had a big impact on myself, that they voted that way. And I think they did rightfully so, and very responsibly. So I'm going to support this new ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Olson. Anyone else have anything to add before we vote? Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I just think we need to be mindful here of the power of an ordinance versus a guideline. An ordinance has the force of law, and it contributes to an attitude that is really stifling confidence and therefore stifling commerce. We're getting less business here because people, as we see from Mr. Jensen this evening and his inquiries, they look to the city council for what our position is. And when we come out with an ordinance, it's layering over the very rules that they have through their franchise or for their corporate office. They are motivated to do what's right, and they have been doing what's right. We've heard that from multiple business operators. And so when we add this layer of ordinance over that, it's going to take us a really long time to get past this 50% decline in business, because it's the attitude that emanates from our positions. And I think that's the danger here, is that we're taking a really long time to open up, and we're going to have, you know, more casualties, they'll add up, they are adding up, day by day. There are businesses that you look at and they still have signs on their door and are not operating. And I'm very worried that our attitude is propagating that lack of confidence that is necessary for businesses to make that decision, to have that conversation with their bank, that things can move forward.
The thing that's changing here, the only thing that will remain is six feet. And I think the confidence was lost in March, when the, when people were scared of this, and I understand things have changed, but that doesn't stop corporations from making rules that say you can't open your dining room yet. This ordinance says six feet, that's it. And I don't see that that should instill lack of confidence in people. People have lack of confidence because they're scared of going out. I think if you get your name in the paper, because you had someone visit your business with COVID, and you get notified that you were, you know, you possibly could be exposed, that has more detriment to you than anything that this ordinance, this six-foot ordinance will ever do. I see it, I can name the one business, I see the impact that had.
But they have rebounded from that, I've been keeping in very close touch with him, and he was very concerned with the method by which the South Dakota Department of Health aired out that announcement. And they have substantially rebounded from that, and his concern is seating capacity, it's limited to 180, they need 600, or they normally seat over 600.
I don't know how, I mean, I don't talk to him, I haven't talked to him, but I can see the numbers in the parking lot. I can see the numbers in the parking lot, and I haven't seen the rebound yet, unless they're all walking to the business.
And that's actually consistent with what Greg told us earlier, he's got seating for 119, 129 people instead of 160, and his business is down 50%.
But he said that he couldn't seat that many because.
It's not down, excuse me, it's not down 50% because of this ordinance, it is down 50% because people are uncomfortable going out, and I get it. Particularly, as he says, if people are there and they're not wearing masks, you know, it's, you're taking, particularly if you are compromised in an immunity standpoint, you are taking your health in your hands when you go out, and people know that.
And I think we can sit here and discuss about capacity, but I don't think that we as a council determine what the consumer does with their money, unless, of course, there's, you know, I mean, we don't do it, I mean, consumers aren't spending money and they're not going out because there's, they just aren't. And that's nothing that we can do by confidence, I think actually, an ordinance, and this is just a thought running through my head, actually provides some measure of security that those people, that they know that due to what the city of Aberdeen does, that there's at least a good confidence that those people are following rules, and that it's a much better place than going to lager's where you have 600 people in a restaurant. That, to be honest, if one person goes in there, that is a recipe for a lot more cases coming out of it. And I'd hope that, you know, businesses would, whether there's an ordinance or not, I hope businesses would still be smart and realize that having 600 people in a confined space is probably not the best thing. And that probably is going to lead to a lot of people not going there to begin with because you're not following any guidelines. So there is a flip side to that, and like I say, this is, I'm not going to sit here and lie, this is, this is a terrible thing either way you go. You know, businesses want to reopen, but at the same point, do we want to see spikes going up? And we haven't even had a conversation, what happens should we see, all of a sudden see a run on hospitals? Deaths are increasing faster now than when a lot of places were shut down in this state. So what type of kind? So what, what type of conversation do we have if all of a sudden more people get sick? Because I, the businesses I talk to, if all of a sudden this goes south, can't be shut down again. That'll be more of a death nail than passing an ordinance saying, "Please follow CDC guidelines and keep groups six feet away."
I agree.
Uh, one, one thing I haven't heard in this discussion much is personal responsibility. And that's not just responsibility of, of the individuals, but also the responsibility of business owners. Again, I've got COVID dot S D dot gov that talks about all sorts of ways, um, to ensure hygiene, um, both for a business and an individual. So I think we need to encourage people to make decisions that's right for them. A lot of people are gonna make the decision that they want to stay home, continue to stay home, and I think we should, we should totally support that. But some people are gonna make the decision that they want to go out and, and take their family out to eat, um, and, and if, and if they're comfortable with that and they can follow the CDC guidelines, um, I think we should encourage that as well. So I think a lot of this comes down to personal responsibility of both the citizen and the business owner, and I think we put the onus on them. I, I don't, I don't think we can possibly pass enough laws, um, to ensure everybody follows all the guidelines to a T. I think eventually, um, we have to trust the citizens of the, of the city as well as the business owners, that they're gonna do what's right. Um, and, and I, and I believe from where we're at, they're ready to do so. So again, I'm gonna, again, say I'm gonna vote no, and I think we need to put the trust in the public to make the right decision.
So we have a lot of ordinances on the books right now that tell us that people do not take personal responsibility. I mean, I, I think that's a, um, a dead end argument. If, if you're gonna say, if you're gonna say that it's personal responsibility, then you start looking at all the other ordinances that are less severe of a situation than this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's not an argument.
It's supposed to be, and this, this law applies to everybody honestly a little bit different because everybody's risk level is different. It's not like any other law we have on the board. Some people are very, um...
Well, you tell that to the forty, fifty percent of the people that are still concerned about that, about this. That may not be a business owner, might not be a person that really wants to go to a restaurant that, um, is jam-packed. I mean, we, we just don't have a hundred percent of the people saying that, "Oh yeah, everything is, is fine, let's just get back to normal." There is two sides of this story.
After this, we'll, uh, we'll begin to wait for our turns to speak just so that we aren't talking over one another. We have quite a lot of people interested, um, in hearing what's being said and if we're arguing and over one another, we can't, we can't be heard. So I think that there's truth in both sides of the argument for sure. So is there anything else that anyone would like to add before we take a vote on this?
Yes, this is, uh, Councilman Remley. I'm, uh, you know, you mentioned how we're going to enforce this. Uh, it's, it's not likely we're going to be able to enforce it because I'm sure the, the police department is not gonna go looking for, uh, business owners that are abusing this, uh, this, this ordinance. Uh, it, it probably is more to the effect that if someone gets a complaint, if the, if the police gets a complaint about a business that is abusing it, then we have a chance to enforce it. Uh, there's, like Brett Bill always says, uh, we don't go looking for, for people to, to, to break the law. If somebody complains, then that gets our attention. Now, you know, we don't know what businesses out there are going to, uh, play by the rules and, and do all the right things, and if they do not do the right things, at least we have the opportunity to react if in fact we get a complaint.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else before we take a vote? Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Bunzness?
Aye.
Rife?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Bunzness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Glad you didn't start with me. I'm gonna vote no just because I'm, is, this is, this is a torn decision, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Mayor Shoneman?
No. Is that five to four? Yes. Five ayes, four noes. Motion does carry. Next, we've got, uh...
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Does not.
Was it, was the vote five, four?
Oh, five noes, right?
Five ayes.
Five ayes.
Five ayes, four noes.
But don't we...
Mr. Mayor, as an emergency ordinance, this would require sixty percent, uh, of the members present to vote in favor of it, so that would require six ayes.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that. Um, motion is defeated. Next, we will move on to the new business. We have discussion of possible first reading and passage of Resolution 200606, our extending emergency ordinance number three regarding the novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health crisis. Ron, why don't you set us up for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, this is the standard resolution. Uh, if the council does not adopt the resolution to extend emergency ordinance number three, it would, it would terminate tomorrow. Uh, emergency ordinance by its, uh, by its own, uh, repeal date will terminate on Saturday.
Thank you, Ron. Can I get a motion?
Move approval. Say it.
And a motion from Rux and a second from, uh, Councilman Bunzness. Does anyone have anything to add before we take a voice vote on this item, or roll call vote on this item? Carl, why don't you give me a vote?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunzness? Johnson?
No.
Rife?
No.
Bunzness?
No.
Ronain?
No.
Remley? Mayor Shoneman?
No, motion is defeated. Do we have anything else before we move?
Move to adjourn. Say it again.
Got a motion from Bunzness and a second from Rux to adjourn. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Bunzness?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunzness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, all.